Courtney? Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bethel Plan Board. Today is April 12th, 2023. I don't really have a prepared opening statement tonight. But let's just say how about this weather today. It's a rainstorm night. We're all just a little gloopy. I'd like to declare quorum. As you heard, Mr. Everett will be joining us in a few minutes. We can go on to approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the? We did not meet in March at all. So the last meeting was February 22nd. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve this draft.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Do we have any new communication we need to? All right. So now we're gonna, we're looking at two historic district applications tonight. One, the first one, which is Chapter 96, in case anyone needs to know, in the in the town code. On building construction. It's for anything with construction in the historic district or home that's in the National Register has to go through us, just to make sure things stay. You're first on tonight, if you want to go ahead.
Awesome.
And just give us a brief descri- I mean, give us a brief description of what you're doing.
My name is Mr. Mason. I'm the pastor of the Nazarene Church, and this is my trustee, Dan Ski. We're looking to replace the old windows in the fellowship hall in the back of the church with seven new windows to kind of help with the heat.
Now, we, I walked around there because I wanted to see what the style was, and I thought I counted 11 windows.
You probably did, but the only ones that we're going to change at this point in time would be the second story.
Oh.
I have some pictures that I didn't give. Courtney, if you'd like to see.
Is there a reason only the second story?
Excuse me?
Is there a reason only the second story?
I thought that would be a good place to start. That's where we have our hot wheels out there.
Okay, okay. Those are big.
The windows that we have found, you're not gonna find anything like this guy. So we're going to have to replace them there, their vinyl, white vinyl. And they'll be the same height, but they'll be a different window. The bottom will open and the rest of it won't. It will be two-piece windows, so let's put the windows together.
So were they, I can't remember what the grids were.
Six over six.
Were they six over six?
I think from the pictures, they're six over six.
Yeah, six over six.
No. Oh, upstairs.
Oh, oh, okay, well, that is considered upstairs.
The side is six, six over six. The back is four, twelve over twelve.
Twelve over twelve?
No, the, either the side. It's a twelve over twelve, not a nine.
Excuse me, nine.
I thought it was nine too, but now that we're counting, it looks like four by three. Each side.
Okay. So. Well, I guess before we get going any further, can I give a a motion on standing?
I make a motion.
A second.
All in favor? That just means you own the building. Standing means you own the building. Or you have ownership of it for that.
So.
Yes. So if you're not able to do them all now, what? How will you plan for the fact that when you go to do the rest, you may not find these exact windows again?
Because the windows in the first floor aren't the same as the windows in the second floor.
There, I see what you.
It's a different size.
Okay.
And the windows in the sanctuary of the church, stained glass, will never be removed.
Right. Beautiful.
So there's I think there's four on the first floor. It would be a different size. We'd like to replace them.
Those are stained glass.
We start with where we spend most of our time. In the lunchroom. It's cold in there. No winter.
And you're saying that the whole window will be white, it will have the black?
From what I understand, it's all white. Yes. The vinyl window. I haven't seen them myself, because we'll have to order them if we get the approval tonight. And it'll probably be six weeks or more before they come.
And are these designed just to go slip right into the opening as they exist? So the, any trim work that adds any character will remain in place?
Yes, that's, they are going in from the inside, so they shouldn't have to touch anything else.
Okay.
If that's what I was told, then.
Oh, that's cool. See that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, does the board have any more questions?
Make a motion for approval?
We actually have a little finding, a findings of fact. Just a little, it's just a two pager.
We need to read those out loud?
Not really. I think we'll go by page. We're going at two pages, we'll do, are they all filled in, Courtney?
Yeah.
There's two. There's language about conditions of approval that's just standard language. So let's look at page one, we've only got two standards. Is everybody good with that?
Good. Yes.
And on page, the second page. Courtney, thank you for not giving us the whole. Yeah, Historic District, you don't need that.
Thank you so much.
Page two, anyway. We have net on all of the standards. And then we also have conditions of approval. Is everyone okay?
I'd like to see a condition of approval of the construction downstairs.
What did you say? The construction what?
I'd like to see her conditions of approval of the construction dumpster.
Oh. Well, they're just getting rid of windows.
I don't, I don't know that. How do we know? When you dispose of the old windows, you have a contractor support this, or is the membership supporting that?
Contractor's going to do it. I really just thought we'd take the windows to the dump.
Like in a truck or something?
Yes. Whereas, we're gonna have to rent a van to go to Portland to get them. And because of the I wouldn't dare to take and put them on pickup truck. But the old windows, I'll throw them in my pickup truck and go to the dump.
You're good with that, Jim?
Yeah, there's just code on, code on construction going into the dump is one pickup load.
Yeah.
So I would.
Has that happened yet?
It's actually in code. It's been code for years.
I think it, I think it reads one pickup truck per day.
One, no, one pickup truck per job. Yes.
People do it like that.
Well, I, I think.
I know what they do, but, but, so I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that.
I just want to make sure that they know that, you know, if you have, if something should happen, and let's say the windows you've planned on when you got down there or something, you have to go to an alternate thing. This does say that any variations has to come back to the board. I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Yes.
They better be right.
It's a custom construction, so.
Yeah, they're big.
There wouldn't be another option waiting for us from the inside.
Okay, I see what you're. Gary, that's a humongous double one, right?
The way they put it in, it, you can only open the bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but over the years, the, it's just a single pane.
Yeah.
And when the wind blows, you can hear them rattle.
And it does blow in the history. Okay. So are we ready for a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Was that to approve the findings of fact and the other?
Yes.
Now, I'll need the post to permit when we go and get started.
Yeah, you'll go see, so probably not tomorrow, but, well, you can go tomorrow if you'd like. I'll be there anytime. I just want to raise a note that you were approved. And then you can go with a building permit from him. He just needs to hear from me that you were approved before you issue it, so.
So where we're going to audit the windows over these couple of days, is really not very important.
No, I don't worry about it, thanks. Yeah. If you want to wait, that would be even better, because then I can just put a note in your file and I don't have to remember to tell them anything.
So when the windows come in, I'll make sure that we come back over and get a post of the
Yep.
The windows.
Yep.
Probably need to put it in the kitchen, where everybody drives by that side.
I, yeah, I think it's more so your neighbors can see it. Yeah, so you're all set then?
All set? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Peter.
How am I doing so far?
You're doing great. So if you just want to give us, I mean, I think it's very clear and obvious what you're doing, but want to give us just a quick overview on what your town accomplished.
Trying to save it, Chapman. You know, we got it, we picked it up as a family project. And we're gonna do a lot of work ourselves to begin with. My brother-in-law, Amanda, got shipped out unexpectedly. And he was a partner in it, and also the one that knows how to do everything. We have insurance blind, so definitely know how to use a hammer very well. And so we ended up he had to ship out under orders, and so we ended up with a project. At the beginning of the time, that's when I started to speak with you about, hey, we know we need to get some approved stuff here. And I think probably sent me some pretty elaborate stuff, knowing, knowing the way my mind works, to try to be as clear as possible. And then when, when we had, Amanda and I ended up with a project, we brought in contractors. So, oh, we'll handle everything with the town, you know. This is what they're concerned about, this is what they're not concerned about. And it was a little late when we realized that we hadn't gotten all the approvals proactively that I think that we've done. And so we, it was, that that was only one of the many black and white communication issues that we had with that particular contractor. So we've taken a step back, bringing a new contracting team. And have documented what was done and why we did it, and so on and so forth. So hat in hand, really. All the, Chapman, there's a myriad of surprises. I mean, we came across paperwork where the fire department had been saying that the place was out of, you know, in violation for over a decade, in, under operation. You know, the fire escape was not safe, you need to prepare it, so on and so forth, for you know, year after year after year. And, and even, I mean, we didn't know that it was full of an obitube. Right, the entire house was full of obitube. To the point where they actually had GFIs in all the outlets with two wires. You pull off, pull off the thing, and it was, there was no ground wire, and you look in and it's going around a tube. And so, you know, that's what we bought. And, and that's not the case anymore. It's a ground-up restoration, you know, starting with the structure. But, so lots of surprises and, and, you know.
And we didn't understand the process, and the contractor didn't explain it to us. And so I'm, I'm apologetic. I didn't really learn about it until I spoke to the code enforcement officer. And I was proud of the project at that point. And then I was like, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry, like, what can we do? So moving forward, we will obviously bring anything that we want to change to you guys and make sure that the town's okay with it. But I, I mean, all they can really do is pat me on the apologize for the windows that have been replaced.
We could explain why we did it, I think I tried to do that and.
Or why the contractor told us he did it.
Well, I think it sounds to me like you guys are trying to restore it as a historic property.
Absolutely.
Right.
Right, so.
I mean, for example, we have, we had to rewire all the exterior lights, so the lights are down. It was a fire hazard, we had to pull it, pull them out of there. We haven't picked out the lights, we'll bring them in front of you and say, hey, you know, what's this, this house was built before lights were lights, electric lights, you know. What's, what's, what's considered historic material for this house?
We've been doing some research, but we're not there yet, and we know we're gonna have to come back to show you guys.
Before we go any further, I should get a motion for standing.
There is LLC material in here, which shows the Getmans.
Yes.
I got it directly from their lawyer.
Yeah, so we know that they have the right to be heard.
Yep, with the sole owner.
So I will make a motion that the applicant has standing.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks.
One quick thing on this. That had, on LLC, that had three people on it. What are you saying?
We, we purchased his, AJ, Anthony Mackey only interest out of the company.
My brother is the other, the third person, and he, he got sent to California in the Navy, so we bought him out and he's been gone for a year.
Then this isn't accurate.
Well, the deed of accuracy has
has Anthony's name.
No, there, it says commander.
Two of them are present, so it would be over 50%.
So they're okay.
Because I have Peter, Amanda, and Anthony.
Right.
I think we're good.
And so the, I think it should be updated. Well, maybe not, because the Petal House, we bought his interest in the Petal House LLC, which holds the deed for the whole thing.
Yeah.
So he, it, there may be some Mike Stevens work there, I'm not sure.
LLC holds the deed.
So the LLC holds the deed, we bought, we had 50% out of the LLC.
Yeah, okay, so then you.
Through Mike Stevens.
You might want to, just as a matter of record, give.
A new operating agreement?
Well, or the documentation of the sale.
Okay.
Oh.
Just so it's very clear, the record should have ever come up again.
You're the expert on that stuff. You're saying that's okay on the.
Yeah.
Just for whatever's right in the, we'll just throw in the file.
Okay.
So can you just, you're going to fix the clawboards, repaint, fix the windows, fix the egress, fix the rot?
Make it pretty proud, it's the top of the town, right? It was known as the top of the town in the history books, and it's iconic to the town. And, and it, it should look like it belongs, and, and it looked like it was falling apart for a long time.
So you're staying with the black and white? Because I, when I did my walk, I saw that there was some gray paint on the upper levels, primer.
That's, that's primer.
That's what I thought.
Where, where the whole, the best match that we could find of paint can in the basement, you know. But all the, you know, all the boards need to be caulked and painted and the, you know.
So the egress, can you just describe that again? What's gonna happen with this egress problem?
Well, that egress was, when it was run as an inn.
Yeah.
And it was unsafe.
Okay, so it's just not gonna exist.
We're not running it as an inn.
So I, I think a lot of the things that you're doing, like painting and caulking, you really, that's regular maintenance, you don't even have to bring to us, just so you know. Am I correct?
Um, yeah, as long as it's the same color and you're replacing like a clawboard with a clawboard in your lawn, not putting siding on, as long as it's the same material and same color, you're fine.
Just, just so you know.
Okay.
The lighting, yeah, we should probably see that, but it's really simple amendment to come in.
I mean, do we know what the style of this?
Federal, what is it?
Is it, do you know if it's federal or colonial or?
Wave of my quick page straight up.
I think it's federal too.
I think it's federal. A lot of the stuff in that is federal.
I would recommend that we consider a condition that says all exterior lighting will be of a style appropriate for a federal-era house. And then they just have to bring a picture.
Well, we need to verify 100% that it's federal or colonial or what? Because if we go and say federal and it turns out that it's colonial.
Does it have those corner boards that kind of go like that? That are fluted corner boards? Okay, it's federal. I'm good with that. It's federal.
Do you say?
Have a broker.
I think it, I think it is federal, I remember.
That was in the broker 101 test.
There's nothing handy in the files, the property file, that would suggest what the style of the house is.
I don't think there would, there probably actually isn't much in that file. Besides maybe Chapman had one originally, whenever it was opened.
I've got a picture where they had an awesome wraparound farmer's porch around the whole thing.
They did?
You can actually still see it in the clawboards, the way they cut it real close there. But I'm not looking to do that.
Oh, come on.
It would do look really cool.
Do we have, are you saying we want to find out what it is so we can put it to bed right now?
Well, it just seems like.
Or just as a COA?
I would be comfortable with a COA, meaning that when they know what they're doing, that we're saying it's historically accurate. But I mean, Jim's, you know, I can't jungle anything about distinguishing architectural styles. So let's call up, let's ask Siri now.
Out of my phone.
I think it would be in the interest of all if they didn't have to come back again. So as long as we've put in something to the effect that it's a true style of the house in the historic district.
No, because they're no longer an inn, Bob.
Yeah, that's.
You only need a change of use if you're going to commercial from residential. So if you're a commercial and you're going down to residential. No, because it's less restrictive to go to resident, you know, it's, commercial is way more restrictive. Although maybe it didn't check all the boxes because it was built whenever. The way our codes read is a change of use. If you go to residential, you don't have to come to us. I mean, they wouldn't have come to us if they built the residential, so that would read.
They're only here because it's historic district.
Yeah.
I've got some things that I just want to air out.
To what?
Air out.
Oh, this sounds serious.
Nothing negative. Probably gonna come across maybe, so I'm pretty sane. Fixing the place up, fantastic, please, thank you. I remember it from four years ago.
It's federal.
It is federal. Thank you.
My, my issues are not with, my issues of what has happened in the last year-plus of work that's been done. And the CEO has said that multiple times, we're told to come to the board. There's nobody can really understand why it wasn't, you guys say it's because of the contractor, and the contractor says it was you guys. It's, it's generally, it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure everything is, is aligned.
So we bought the pro, bought the house last April, so it wasn't over a year. And the, the outside work started, this first day on the job was August 15th. So just putting, we were out there trying to do the best that we could.
Gardening and.
Gardening and doing whatever, but in terms of any really heavy lifting, structural things. I just wanted to, you said that we've been working on it for over a year and a half.
It feels like a.
I'm sure it has.
It feels like that to us too.
Yes, yes. I just wanted to, I mean, the, it was bad, but it wasn't bad.
And we didn't understand the historical aspect of it, like, what we had to do, it's our first time buying a house and doing a bunch of outside work to it, really, and then having it be in the historic district. We didn't understand the rules. So we thought it was, we didn't know that we needed to come and get permission for things, or I didn't.
Yeah. I, I knew that we, we needed to get permission. I thought it was being handled. I, Randy was there many times and had conversations with the contractor when I wasn't there. I would check in, is it okay, so on and so forth. So.
You, you gotta build a permit to do interior work, but not exterior work. And then there was structural work that was done without a permit and without coming to the board. Yes, the stuff needed to be done because the way the windows were put in against the roof line and there was rot. But I, I.
Structure.
My, my point is, I don't know how to say this, but I, I feel there should be some accountability. And I've been toying with this since the day this came through, and actually even before. We don't want to set the precedent, I don't feel that we want to set the precedence that somebody can go and do something and then come in later and say, oh, I'm sorry, realize, and then we just have to ask, yeah, no problem, go for it.
Well, we didn't paint the house pink. It's not like we went in there and did some really terrible things that are like eyesores. I would think that we should be.
I agree 100%.
And I can understand not wanting to set a precedent, but I mean, we, I think it's pretty benign.
I agree 100% with it. And, and what work's been done, needed to be done.
It's just the, the accountability and the responsibility of getting it done, didn't get done. And, and I am not the only person that has seen it. Other people in town have seen it, other people in the historic district have seen it and said, why do we have to? So the murmur is around.
I'm wondering who, who was saying that? And was it the windows that we replaced that were rotten?
It's, it's seeing the windows, seeing exterior work, not seeing a permit for outside work.
I didn't know that we didn't have a permit for the outside work. I thought of the permit that our contractor, I thought that was what we needed, was that Class B thing hanging on the wall, on the, on the door.
I know, Jim, that the Getmans have been really stressed. Okay, what, what would you have us do? Find them?
I, I don't know.
Or.
So I believe practically what would happen in this case or in any case, like if somebody opened the business and they go to planning board. I believe the code enforcement is our act, and this may be, I mean, I don't know the codes exactly. But I believe that Randy can't even impose a fine. I believe Randy has to make a recommendation to the select board. I don't think he's allowed to.
I don't think he can unless the select one have initially authorized it.
Yeah, he has to put something to the select board, and the select board has to say, hey, we'll double permit fee or, or whatever they do for penalties.
That's basically what happens.
And I would, I would certainly not make that recommendation.
Yeah, so this board does not have the ability to impose fees and punishments. The code enforcement can make a recommendation, but I believe the select board is the only board that has that ability.
That is accurate.
I mean, I think that.
I don't, I, I just want to add. I don't want to set a, I agree with you.
It doesn't set a precedent.
Yes, it does, because what you're doing is you're allowing people in the historic district to do work, and you're not doing anything about it.
We are doing something about it tonight. The parties are acting, but.
It's not our problem to make sure that they understand the rules. It's the homeowner's problem to understand that they understand the rules.
And obviously, I, I, I will just speak for myself. I'm taking this to be a clear misunderstanding of the process. It happens, they're responsibly here tonight with a complete application. And going to proceed, I mean, walking around a property out from the street level today, believe me, there is probably 90% of the work that still has to be done. There is a ton, you know.
I would agree with you. If they'd just done one window or something, or this has been a month, this has been.
I just don't think it's our purview to be discussing.
I know.
Lack of, lack of.
I, I agree with, I mean, I just don't think it's, it's to what end we can.
What are we doing next then? That's, I don't want to see it next time.
You guys can vote if you want to make a recommendation to the code enforcement officer or not.
I will, I will say something. I, my husband, I hate people who do this on a board, but my husband's been a career, uh, was a career contractor. Now he's, uh, he's a consultant to all contractors in town. And I asked him and he said, he says, usually any contractor that's decent is going to handle all the permitting. He said, they don't, homeowners don't know. They don't know what they, they don't know what to say they're doing. He said, I've never, he said, I felt like it was my insurance, everything was my responsibility and my responsibility to work with the code enforcement officer. So I think that's what has happened here and, you know, Peter has, I'm sure what you guys are thinking right now is, oh my God, we have bought this property in dire straits. We are restoring it. It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be the top of Main Street and you people are telling us.
I get it.
You know, but I, I like to balance that a little bit because I'm thrilled that you're restoring it.
I don't think the actions of one party can, uh, you know, be held up and say, how are we going to fix a problem going forward? And the whole time I'm on this board, this is the first time I've heard of a situation like this and, um, where, you know, something occurred in the contracting relationship which left a lot of pieces unresolved. Um, and, uh, I'm just, I am grateful that they're here and owning up to whatever happened and said, we're prepared to go forward on the right footing.
I agree with that. I, 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 we also know that this contractor has done other work in the historic district and has come to the board for approval before the work was ever started. So whether it falls on the contractor or it falls on the homeowner, I, it's, it.
Jim, I don't think it's our role to adjudicate that.
That's because he knows he needed to get approval before he did anything, so why did he do it to our house if he didn't come and ask?
It's not us to adjudicate that.
I think it's something that we need to address. I think we need to address this with Randy and, and, and have. It, it figure out what happens in a situ, it's like a lot of the things that I ordered this, is you can't do this, you can't do this, but there's no consequences.
That's.
And that's up to Randy and the select board. And so, I mean, I mean, I would, oh, you know what? We do have a, uh, application we need to look at. Jim, is there anything else?
No, that basically covers it. Can I make a motion to approve that?
We have to go. We have to say the applications, because we have to do this little two-page thing again.
But now where does the pedal house come from, out of curiosity?
Oh, we were, the idea of the pedal house, um, was that we were thinking of turning the barn into a bike museum. Uh, you know, with old-fashioned bikes with the stories of bikes because it's kind of been, it's kind of cool. Um, and then, you know, including like a bunch of, uh, electric bikes in part of your stay, it was to be a short-term rental. Um, we're, we're a little disheartened with this whole thing at this point, so I don't know if the vision will actually get there. But that's, that's where the pedal house came from. It would be really cool, right?
Sure.
You know, I remember that, uh, that bike that was orange and it had the little wheel in the front and the big fat wheel in the back and the little five-shifter right there, I forget what it was, it was a Schwinn.
We really just came up with the pedal house because we also bought like these two, uh, like bikes, what's it called, the two C C bike?
Tandem.
Tandem. Yeah, we got two tandem bikes that are from like the eighties and so that's where we got the little thing that we never.
I knew there had to be a story.
But, yeah.
Yeah, you, you, I think that's.
Hopefully you won't go through a lot of projects to church and air.
What's that? No, not as a business. Yeah, no. Yeah.
You're not doing us.
It was just, it would be a cool thing for, for, uh, you know, to be able to go into a bike museum, you know?
I would.
Make it a, make it an honor.
I'd direct to grant have a business in the, in the store.
I mean, the Chapman was in the historic.
Okay. All right.
The pedal house was an antique store.
Yeah, I think you, I think you.
We're not trying to do that.
It wasn't, it was going to be like.
We're trying to find a way out to just board the place out.
Yeah, it was just going to have bikes on the walls. Peter was in the museum.
Okay, on the, on the application on page one, uh, Peter and Amanda, you've got completed exterior renovations to the pedal house that include the following window move and replacement on Church Street side. What does that mean?
So on the Church Street side, that would be there. So those win, the one window that was going into the roof line?
Yeah.
So that needed to come up six inches in order for that not to look.
Should be the very last.
Not wonky, was to bring up all the windows by six inches.
This whole water issue.
I explained it very clearly there.
There's actually a blue picture.
The one over the porch, those three windows.
So basically here.
Okay, this one here.
Okay.
So the one, this one here.
Yes. Oh, so you moved those up?
And yes, I did.
I will say that that porch, uh, roof thing is a little wonky.
Yeah. Yep. It's, if you want to walk out back behind there, if we don't do anything about it, that's the entire center of that house is going to fall down.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we should make a condition of approval that if you, um, that you have to wrap the porch around the entire building like it used to be.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Okay, so now we just got to do the two, what?
Are we motioning?
A question. Yeah, okay, we're back to page one now. Uh, can everyone take a look at page one and the findings of fact and make sure that everyone's in agreement? And how about on page two?
Of course, there's no changes to the entrance or projections, but the, um, it's not a door, what's the thing called? Over the front door.
Well, this says projections to sidewalks shall be compatible with it. So I think it means like, and it may be different, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it means like additional walkways onto the sidewalks. I believe is what it means. I think you guys can decide that, but that's why I read it.
Yeah, there's no.
Because it's a.
Okay.
Yeah, relationship of entrances and other projections, so I'm not, I think you can change the wording, obviously.
Is everybody good?
Yes. No, any ligged condition added at construction dumpster put back. Okay. Had a dumpster.
We're not doing, we're not doing our, right now.
We're not doing any more with the windows and everything else is done outside.
We've, we've taken everything out that we're going to take out for a while.
What about the inside?
We come back to you guys. There's a construction outside, that's required demo.
They're done with.
The inside, we've been.
They're done with.
I mean, on the outside, we don't care what they do on the inside.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, but.
The inside is where most of the work has been done. I mean, to pull down ceilings and whatnot to rewire for.
For Robin too.
So is, there's, is there still work left to be done inside?
Well, yes, but no deconstruction work.
Finished work. We're not demoing right now. So if we have to demo again.
Put up tram and all that stuff. So you're going to have scrap wood.
What?
What's that?
You're going to have scrap wood.
I just don't.
No.
I, we can't mandate that. We can't mandate.
No, we go into the interior. I think we have something on our building permit about it.
Okay.
I've, I've got lots of land that I can make little buyers for things like that, but, um, and get a proper permit, but I don't, I, I mean, I'm eight thousand dollars into a dumpster and it, in that location, it gets filled with a lot of things that are other than mine, um, which is, is very frustrating.
Yes, I do agree with that.
I prefer not to put one back, but I will put one back because as much as I love mad at the dump, I don't really like to go there three times on a Saturday like you guys talked about.
Yeah. We, um, don't need a construction dumpster right now. I've actually taken over the project.
Okay.
My trimester, so we need one, um, right now.
Okay. All right. Are we, are we good to go?
Motion to approve?
Okay, grab a second. All in favor? Great.
One question regarding the lights. So we come back with the lights?
Well, oh, yeah, we got carried away. Um, we do want a condition on that, that the lighting will be, uh, historically appropriate, but do, now here's the question to the board. Do you want to put a condition of approval on here that they're historically accurate or do you want them to run that by us? I hate, I'm, I'm with Mitchell. I hate to.
I do not want them to run that by us and I would think that accurate is not a good word. I would just say in keeping, they've stated their intent to us.
I know.
Clearly. And so I think that as long as it in keeping with the architecture and the setting, that we're fine.
Okay. And according to just make a condition of approval that the lighting is.
Exterior lighting.
Is whatever Mitch said.
Exterior lighting will be compatible.
With federal.
With federal style.
Appropriate to the style and the location of the home.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did I hear something?
Because we don't know what that is.
Yes, because I, I thought that we went quite strictly by the book there when we looked at, at Dr. Young's house, when they put that reconstruction on that up there. We looked at windows, we looked at lighting, you know, everything. Why are we changing?
Well, do.
It, it's.
I think we just had to make them come back. How about if they submit that to us and they do not have to come back?
I can't make a decision on if it's period style and that's why we have to.
Needs to, needs to come back.
No, we'll take it back here without.
Pursue the gettings.
Yes, they don't want to show.
You don't have to come back.
Yeah, just if you want to submit it, my office, it can be something that I can sub, if you write a letter saying I can represent you, I will submit it and.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm taking that off.
You're welcome that. But, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
Put under that. Yeah, it's, it's got to be the same.
Right, right, we went right through that.
We don't even know if the windows.
So work it with them.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We're done, right?
Sorry. Are you guys all set with us? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Reason why I mentioned, we just don't want to. You want to stay consistent.
They're just not here. I don't, I mean, you put it up if you want, I don't care. Sorry.
Storage.
That's what storage is meant?
Yeah.
I get it. Okay, that will storage is subject to chapter 140 site plan and I understand, are you ready?
No, he's not here.
Yeah, I'm not, oh.
Did anybody tell him?
I mean, he was aware of when the meeting was. Um, I'm not sure why he's not here. And now they've been delivering a bunch of baby goats. They've, I don't, I don't know why. Um, so his wife had to leave for an emergency and he's been delivering the goats, so I don't know if he maybe just forgot.
Do you want to take two minutes and I can call him? Do they have to be here?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, if you, if you have asked, technically they don't, but if somebody has questions that can't be answered via the packet?
Yeah.
Then that would be a problem.
Why don't we, um.
Who would have had to have known ahead?
Why don't we, um, can you call that?
Table it?
Table it and for this opening song tonight and then we can move ahead with the other.
Do you want to take a minute and call them and then we'll.
And but we'll go ahead.
Let Napa?
Yeah.
With Napa. You said you have his number? We'll call him and see if he's.
Just put this aside, let her make the call.
Jim's going to make it. He's got his number.
This works with you guys. Don't look so smart.
It's my face.
He's, Randy's when he pours the pour and he's usually working on.
I think, I think he said when he was in here last week that like his wife, there was a family problem and I think they have goat, I'm pretty sure some of their goats. So he had been delivering goats nonstop because it's goat baby season. Um, so he had just been really busy.
Do they raise goats?
I, I, I think, I'm pretty sure he said it was goats, but maybe she, but I think he's been doing.
Do they need goats? They're adorable when they're little.
Yoga with goats.
Yeah.
I've seen that. I've seen videos of that, yes.
It looks fun.
My daughter wants babies, they're just really bad.
Oh, no.
Everybody's got them.
No, there's really.
Oh, I'm looking at the.
I'm used to it.
Can you see what signage side?
Say again?
The signage for Napa?
Yeah.
It's on one of the elevations.
But Randy has to, to deal with that anyway.
I didn't see any signage.
Oh, yeah, there's a.
There's elevations.
No, yeah, the sign and the sign.
Yeah, it says it right here. It's, uh, six nine.
I have the elevation plans for the day. If you want to look at that.
Um.
Yeah, I did print the color copy. It was too late to put in the packet, but I printed some sort of, because they already have the black and white ones so they're not getting new information. They have.
Jim, still talking?
Before you start, could you show me just, I'm curious, which end is the front end? Where is the front of the store?
Front of the store would be, so this is Route 2 right here. So, yeah, heading north on Route 2, this is where it's over.
Okay.
And so that's the front of the store.
Okay.
Of the entrance is on the side, correct, is that?
Do we have that correct?
It just looks.
The front, the front of the building, when looking at the elevations, the front of the building is along Route 2 or is it on the?
I think it's on Sports Toma.
Right where you're at.
Okay.
Okay.
Misunderstood that.
Does it look shorter?
Yeah, that would make sense.
Did you reach him?
So between Sports Toma and the existing buildings.
Yeah, Bear Haven. Yes. I'll give a general overview.
I don't believe we're waiting for him to find out. We're just waiting for him.
Oh.
Jim.
Should I get him?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's maybe trying another number.
Yeah, it's all right because we don't see him tonight.
I mean, if they're not here, but if no one had any issues too, they didn't need to be here, right? So we determine that first of all.
Oh, well. Find him?
He's one of, either of his three votes.
Could you text him just so he's aware?
I left message, I left a message in the house for cells just gave three.
I for one, I guess I've never understood that an applicant doesn't have to be present at the meeting in which, I thought they.
Maybe, I mean, I know Sarah has presented stuff before.
I, I for one do not feel comfortable acting on an application for which we don't have the opportunity to, if any questions are clarified as to an applicant.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Well, I, but until they make their presentation, sometimes you honestly don't know what you don't know that you're going to need to ask.
Right.
We can accommodate another.
And I think that we can let these guys go. Go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Board. I'm Shane Howley with Mainland Development Consultants. I'm here representing Chris and Nat Bowles, NMC Realty. I also have Bob Ari from Mainland and John Bell, the builder. So quick overview of the project. It's located on Route 2, uh, generally north of the airport, so past the airport, a little bit further, uh, north. Um, the project will be located next to Sports Toma, which is this building here and the Bear Haven. It doesn't show on the plan, but the Bear Haven, uh, multi-use development on that side over there. Uh, so 7,000 square feet of retail space, 37 parking spaces. So, 7,000 square feet of retail space, 37 parking spaces are proposed. The building will be on a private, private well located in the back and private septic system located up front there. The lot will be accessed, or the development will be accessed by the common access drive. It's currently used for Sports Toma, that kind of leads me into permitting. Right now, the, what is it? March 15th, I submitted a main DEP store mark permit by rule, and so it's been past the two-week threshold. I haven't heard any comments, so we have that. We also have a main DOT traffic movement permit, TMP, that was obtained for this project, which includes both of these lots. Yes. Uh, where was it going? So, I ran stormwater workouts for this, because I'm, I'm sure that question may come up. Um, I ran stormwater workouts, not because main DEP asked for it, but because DOT asked for it. So we have two stormwater ponds proposed, one out back here and one up front. DOT asked for these because we tie stormwater runoff into the DOT drainage network there, which then runs underneath Route 9 and, or Route 2 and then into the Anderson. So those calculations and the other permits are located in Section 6 and 7 of the application that I forwarded off you guys. I think that's all I have right now. If you have any other questions for the board?
Um, I guess first I'd like to get a motion that you have standing.
I will make that motion since we have the LLC. This is an LLC, correct? And the two of you are.
We make up 50% ownership, we're brothers.
How much?
50%. Our other brother and sister are the other.
Okay.
So, do I just? Okay, all in favor? All right. Jim?
Uh, yes. Sorry.
So, um, so what we really, we're gonna table, well, we might table it, I have to get, he says this from the board on that, but, um, for a site walk on this.
Okay.
Uh, I think, I was on the board when we saw Napa the last time. Lori, you were too, right? Jimmy, were you?
Yes.
Jim, were you? Anybody else? Okay, so yeah, we have enough new members, definitely worth a site walk. Sorry for another night.
Uh, I do have questions from other, I don't.
Okay, yes, okay. Well, let's go with Lori first, she has a question.
So, um, one of the things I'd like to request is that you bring material samples in the colors that are being proposed on this property. In other words, please tell me that the stone at the bottom is not plastic and fake. I want to see the gray and the blue. I want, I want, I understand the goal of building a branded building, but we had a problem with this the last time, and I'm only speaking for myself. When you have brown, kind of cream-colored buildings on other side, and the standards we have about compatibility in the environment. So I think in fairness to this board, we need to see all the materials in sample size, so we know physically out there what we are looking at. I believe that the, um, I hope you'll stake the building corners. I hope you'll stake the retention pond corners. And, um.
Is this for the site walk?
Yes. Yeah, otherwise we get out there and.
Hard to visualize.
Very hard to visualize.
That's, that's a pretty typical thing that we do.
And they, they know how to do this with the right clothes, I'm sure. And, um, so, uh, the parking lot. Where is that oriented to?
So this, this is the front of the building here.
On the shared drive. Yeah, I know, I just want to make sure.
This is Route 2, okay.
And so this is, this is Route 2, it's a little bit hard to see here because it's grayed out. Yes, and then the main access drive here with parking on the front and the side and a loop around.
Okay.
So, so drivers are able to loop around with a loading dock for deliveries.
The loading dock is not at the back, it's at the side, the opposite side to the front?
Um, like I said, it's a public, yeah, so this is the front and so it's on the opposite side of the front. But when looking from Route 2, it's.
And are there any windows in the front Route 2 facing elevation?
I think it's. That's, I believe the second, the Jima College one.
Okay.
Here, can I borrow this, is this one?
Those are the windows?
This is.
They're facing elevation.
And this is, this is facing Sport Toma?
Yes, and this is facing Route 2.
Yeah.
I, I. And I don't know what these gray boxes are.
Is there like faux barn doors? So they're not really barn doors, obviously, because we don't.
Side elevation.
And, and the one thing that is happening here is the Route 2 elevation is not showing a gabled roof line.
So the gable has to face Route 2.
Well, I'm only speaking for myself, so you, you know, other board members have taken. You got a flat thing, which is what we were, you, thank you for bringing back something with the elevations that are more appropriate to what our new ordinance is contemplating, but not to have, to have a flat elevation on Route 2, I would say.
It's not the pitch roof. Yeah, it's not flat.
Oh, what am I looking at?
See the, see the front? This is, this is the front, which is facing Sport O S Toma.
Right, so you're looking at the side, which you're looking at as part of a roof.
So this is, this is the entrance to the building facing Sport Toma.
Yeah, but I'm looking at, this is, this is Route 2.
This is Route 2.
That's not great.
What Route 2 is gonna see is a flat wall with a pitched roof towards Route 2.
So we will see.
This is a pitched roof.
We'll see a pitch.
Okay, I'm not picking up the pitch, it's more like a parapitch.
No, it's a, it's a five, it's a, it's a prequal pitch.
Prequal pitch, okay, my apologies, I just, these are some of the things we went around the block on the last time, want to make sure that, um.
The barn door things are not functional, they're just there to break up the, not being above. Correct.
Um.
You are gonna have a loading dock. Yeah, it's not a loading dock, it's an overhead door.
I would too.
Okay, so it's.
Yeah.
The stuff showed it as, as an overhead.
There's retention pond right there.
So I just wanted to make sure that that's an overhead door.
And will there be landscaping to divide the parking lot?
So there is a, a landscaping plan that I could.
Yeah, you've got a landscaper.
All right.
Bear with me, I think it's buried back here a little bit.
We're gonna get, and talk to this, well, Sue does my idea, because she'll be all over it. One of our, you know, Sue, one of our board members is. Always worried about that.
L11 is landscaping.
Hey, there we go. Yep, so there is a, some vegetation proposed between the stormwater pond here and the edge of pavement of the parking up front. And then some, some vegetation in front of the building, along with that vegetated island up to the right there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's sort of like a little bump out.
If we could get like, at the next meeting, a better idea of.
Some of it is scale, this is a fairly large building. And, you know, what you don't want to end up with, is not a fair, 7,000? Maybe I don't know what, how big things are or not big, but I just, we, I know, I want to make sure that the landscaping is of scale to the, you know, you're not putting little petunia pots in. Yeah, yeah.
So we.
Yes. Yes.
We like to keep premium looking, sort of looking like landscape, cut, mowed grass, nice and, that's how we like it, our customers experience coming in, they, they enjoy that. The town community enjoys it, we like to have clean looking buildings.
Yeah. So, uh, the things I asked about for the site walk in terms of material samples, so we can see it, is that something you can achieve for us? Rather than just having pictures and colors, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And that makes it so much easier to.
Have you driven down 302 through Bridgestone lately?
I'm very aware of that project, on a whole nother level.
Yeah.
Is that the same construction time?
It's similar.
Similar, yeah. I don't think it's quite the same.
It's not the same, it's, we have more site. I was one, I will, that one, that was more steel? I will have Courtney.
It was a more typical.
I'll make sure Courtney gets.
Steel building package, this, I think you've done a good job of trying to take some of the feedback we gave you the last time, the field of the community and what Route 2 is developing as, and trying to keep it at a level that, um.
But we can like the roof.
I'm still a little bit, I'll be honest with you, a little bit struggling with the gray and the blue, but I'll hold my com, I'll hold my thinking to keep it open till I get out there for the site walk.
I remember we bent down this.
We've bent down this.
Were you the same builder?
No, well, not, not on the board.
We had somebody else.
Builder, but not at, not on the board meeting, not Matt Gurney.
How, how long ago was that?
Yeah. During COVID and Zoom, yeah, I Zoom, yeah.
Oh, you came back.
Well, that was, 2016 was a different ownership group. So we bought.
And this is technically.
And we came to a virtual meeting during COVID and just kind of, COVID screwed everything up, so we put this on the back burner.
Oh, I see.
And that was old, really, you know? And I was, yeah, that was our father.
Yeah. How high is the building?
38, 9 inches.
So it's, it's of a different scale, this is what I said big. I mean, the other buildings are lower. I understand, but you, you need certain things for your building operations, but it does.
We're actually talking about lowering the building? All right, I'll, I'll tell you that.
It's, I mean, that, that picture doesn't.
What is that? That was an old.
This is your, the old.
Oh.
The old elevation.
Oh, yeah, that's not, yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, and we, and we never approved it because.
Well, they never approved it.
It was a flat roof.
That wasn't, that was. That was different. That was a different, we're close auto parts, that was Tony Carter, same plan, site plan and stuff.
Yeah.
Elevation.
I was just sort of curious about the, again, I'm new to all of this too, so I don't know the history, but it, the sport, the driveway, the fact that you're sharing a driveway, when there was an empty lot there, Sport Toma got approval, they did a driveway that was specifically gonna be a benefit for, like, why would your neighbor pay for your driveway, I guess? I don't have any opposition or anything, I'm just just sort of curious as to how this came about and why you could share a driveway.
Can I take a stat first, Bob?
Please, go for it.
So, um, as we kind of talked about, the project's been before the board several times. First, it went before the board in 2013, if I'm correct. And so, it was part of a lot split, a subdivision, intended to be used for commercial purposes, and so this layout has been around since 2013. And so for that development, the traffic movement permit was needed. Um, and so DOT reviewed that, um, this site as a whole, generally exactly as it is now.
It's gonna have one single driver with two businesses on each side.
And DOT likes single driveways or reduction of driveways for multiple users.
I was on the board when we did that.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
I didn't notice, but you're gonna have, do you have right of way and through there from the other people? Or is that part of your conditions on the deed of the property?
Um, I believe that is an easement currently, so that would be part of the deed.
That's what?
Ease.
An easement, I believe this is an easement line right here at the entrance. Although it should be, I'd have to look at the survey.
And so the whole driveway is technically on your property?
No, actually that driveway would be, in, in theory, it deeded right of way for both properties to be able to use.
The driveway is on Sport Toma property, but it looks like there's an easement for not to use that.
It locks my head. Oh, there it is.
I found the plan.
That's different, it's, it's critical.
Well, because it looks like, it looks like the easement's going way over to the Sport Toma side. I didn't review the easement.
There, it is.
Okay.
Um, it says Black Diamond Daily Real Estate, LLC, where its accessories and interest in granting acknowledge, other parties will share the use of the easement area and other improvements in the easement area. So I want to talk about equal responsibility for all costs for parent maintenance, including stone removal.
Which section are you looking at?
Um, I am in Section 3, I'm on the deed.
She's reading the deed.
Yeah, it's on the exhibit A, on the deed, I think it's like page 2 and 3.
I went down through it and I didn't see that. Can, when, when you come back, can we have the correct names on the drawings? By any chance, we still have Tony's name or passport?
Yes, I can do that. So, the reason why I left it, because everything else was applicable, there were handful things that changed, like they changed the floor layout plan, so I had to change some entrances. So I only updated the plans that reflected changes.
It'll, it'll just cover your tail.
But yeah, yeah, I understand how that's a little silly, being a previous applicant.
And this issue about the building height, when do, when do you plan to resolve that?
What's, what's the issue?
They're thinking of lowering it.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be lowered, it's cost-saving benefit for them, I don't see why they wouldn't do it, it's just something that me and Chris just spoke about literally today though.
Oh, okay.
But I would assume that it's probably gonna happen.
What, what height is it at right now?
30 feet, 6 inches.
For the ridge, yes. The, the height is 22 feet and we're talking about lowering it to 18. So it would decrease the, the ridge by another 400 feet as well. So, I've got a few questions. Pull, pull your eye, just.
Was that me rolling my eyes at you?
Is this gonna be like it was planned last time, there's gonna be a distribution center?
Never, never intended to be a distribution center, just a.
Okay, so it's just gonna be a store.
Operate as a store as now, now a lot of our stores are different than your traditional stores. We use a smaller footprint for our retail area and then the outback is stock, because you don't know what you need for your vehicle.
Right.
We have to look up where to do it.
Yep, no.
So it's configured that way, but everything in that store is for sale by last year.
Okay, so it's not gonna multiple, gotcha.
No, it might have been with Tony, because he had a couple started nearby.
Tony wanted it to be a distribution center centrally located to the other stores.
Yeah, no, we have no need for that.
Trucks, so it's gonna be the same as what's coming in now at 11:30 and.
Yeah, there'll be one truck coming in, dropping off nightly freight at, you know, yeah, closer to midnight.
Yeah. And still just Monday through.
Saturday.
Friday.
Oh, the deliveries, yes, that's for Friday.
Yeah, okay. That was all.
That was it?
That was it.
So, I think, um, I want to know what the board's feeling is about site walk.
I think we need one.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Make a motion for a site walk?
Give us a second. I'm kidding, we're not here. All in favor?
Okay. And say that to me.
Yeah. Oh, I did forget you already, Courtney has in a butter sent in a few questions.
I have a butter who purchased a lot directly behind this in the subdivision, they're currently building a house, right up there, yep. So he lives out of the area, so he just emailed me some questions. Um, he wanted to make sure that no trees will be cut within 20 feet of the property lines marked with the rebar caps 2397 and 1271. So it shows the, on one of the plans, it shows that some trees are gonna be cut out by like the well.
Just a little bit there, I don't have a scale on me or what the existing tree line is, but you can tell there is a little bit of cutting back there. Um, there's a building setback that.
So that's 20 feet right there, is that building setback 20 feet?
Uh.
There was, there was a drawing, I think, that had a tree.
Can you just come and confirmation that there wouldn't be trees cut all the way to the property line?
Yeah, trees would not be cut all the way to the property line, that's.
Okay, so is, is there any way that they'll, they'll need that 20 feet back there?
Uh, if I have a setback related.
Thanks, Jim. This one has 20 feet. How many feet is it?
Um, he just asked if it, if no trees would be cut within 20 feet of the property line.
This is under there, okay, okay. I think we got it.
Yeah, sorry, sorry for your, your building, nobody's, just curious.
He also wanted to know if there's any way to mark the 20 foot setback from the property to make sure that no trees are cut.
Okay, I hear Shane, it says remove tree line.
This is C1, C1.1, says remove tree line.
Yes, um, some, some trees would have to be cleared back out well in order to get the, the proper setback from the septic system. So some would be.
But that well is 40 feet from the, from the, that well is 40 feet from this property line.
Correct. Correct, and, and you can see, that's existing, it's kind of hard to see my apologies, but that's existing.
So that is existing right there?
Uh, in the center here, that's existing, and then this is proposed where it's a little bit darker, and so just clearing back to the well. There, and it looks like about forty, forty fifty. So that is thick as there, and then about thirty feet maybe at the center.
Can we sort of focus on that? Uh, at the sidewalk?
Yeah, so he also wanted to know if he's allowed to participate in the sidewalk, I know typically that is a thing if you're in a butter, any of them, for best outcome. Um, and then he wants to know if drilling a bedrock well will affect neighboring wells within the Birch Woods or Deerview Road subdivisions. Does that?
Where's the hydrologist at the?
Yeah, I don't know.
Who knows?
I think it's one of those things that nobody really knows what's underground, sometimes you can drill a well, you get water, sometimes you don't, sometimes you hit a fissure and you get, you know, ten gallons a minute or something like that, and it's connected to your neighbor's well or not.
Yeah, so it's kind of unknown.
I just be sort of, not the, not the hydrology part.
But it's unusual, right? I mean, I, I haven't seen that as a major problem in this area, you know.
You know, depends on what you hit.
Yeah, when anyone drills a well, when every one of the wells that you guys drink off of was drilled, there was always the risk that somebody else's well would be affected by, and out west, they, they shoot each other over this. And it, it is rare, it doesn't happen a lot, uh, that's not draw that much water, so the well will maintain a height, and, and it would be similar to whatever the others are. But there is always a risk, I can't tell you that it won't.
Lot of heavy toilet flushing, yeah.
But not if he's building his house, he can't say his well is not gonna affect his neighbors or ours.
Yeah.
So it's one of those things where, where probably he'll be okay, if it's not, there are, uh, the well drillers have rules they have to follow.
And they're pretty amazing, you, cause you can call them and say, we're drilling a well in this lot, um, and they have a really good idea of the wells all around it and what this, what the environment's gonna be like for that well.
Alright, that's all of the questions, thank you.
Thanks, Courtney, sorry, I missed the question.
Setbacks, Woodtown sewer is thirty feet, and Woodtown sewer adjacent structures thirty feet from front, rear, and side, without town sewers twenty feet, and the town sewer is a minimum of twenty feet.
There's no town sewer.
So, twenty feet.
I have to figure out a date for our sidewalk. Uh, which we usually quite, usually get pretty quickly, do we have?
They would be coming back on the.
When is the earliest you guys are scheduled for a sidewalk, because you need to make stuff up.
Time fairly flexible, that's something I can do just before, um, I guess it's up to you, if you guys would wanna, do that site one as well.
I mean, essentially, you could, I mean.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Do your first site one. As long as somebody can take notes on who attends and what time it starts.
And it's on next week, um, I am here next week, I'm gone the week after.
So, the twenty-sixth is normally our next meeting, but she's not to be here, we could still have a meeting, and that way we're rolling, cause otherwise they're delayed.
We could try next week, but let's try next week for a sidewalk then.
So, next week would be.
Seventeenth through the twenty-first.
Not the twentieth, what do we do?
Or can't do Tuesday?
Wednesday's, Wednesday's gonna be hard, but you will.
Monday?
Still one day next week.
Thursday?
I could shift other things around, but I can, I can either.
That's the twentieth, yeah.
I can't do anything until four thirty, four to five, maybe even later.
I mean, even if I could get like.
So the nineteenth is left between the six.
That's, what day of the week is, did you say the twentieth was Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
Or could we potentially schedule a sidewalk, and is that something that if like one person couldn't attend, if can the stakes stay up for, I mean, is that?
Stakes, stakes.
I'll leave them there.
I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, if one person can't make a day, but everybody else can make a day, could we just?
And one of us stop by and look.
It's, it's not like it's a, you know, back road that you can't, I mean, we all are aware of.
Thursday and Wednesday are, are been identified as not, and Tuesday?
Why not Wednesday?
I have.
Well, if we do Wednesday, we're just gonna do it early enough that it would be here for six.
I've, I've, I've got.
Why do you have to be here at six?
Tuesday, the eighteenth? And? No, no, that's pat, talking for you.
No, it's fine, we can do it, I mean, if we do it earlier, I'll be okay.
I just, I can get away anytime during the day.
Uh, what's tomorrow, tomorrow is?
Thirteenth.
Thursday, yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
No, we can't do that, if you, if you want me to break.
Yeah, samples, he needs some time.
Yeah, he's gonna get samples, well, samples don't have.
No, we don't need that for the sidewalk.
No, like they.
Oh, sorry, she did.
Yeah, but then.
So you go out the next meeting, correct?
Okay, I, I'm beginning to think that maybe what Jim suggested about the twenty-sixth makes more sense at this point, since we'd be hearing them on the tenth?
That's two weeks ago.
Well, no, what I was saying was that our regular scheduled meeting is the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, but we're not having one.
We're not having one because Courtney's not here, we can still have the meeting, they can be here, but we need to do the sidewalk.
Well, we should have a meet, a meeting where we're delivering without Courtney, that doesn't make sense.
I mean, as long as somebody can take notes and you can guarantee that thing's gonna be.
Yeah, I, no, no, I say we do the site of the twenty-sixth.
We do the teenager type meeting.
And hear them on the tenth. Giving them time to get everything pulled together the way we asked them to.
Maybe it's just, all I'm seeing is that's four weeks before, it puts them out another four weeks.
And, I don't wanna do that, right?
No, okay.
I mean, you guys wanna get started, right? You guys, we need you to get going and start.
Backwards.
So, let's go pretty quick.
So, could, could anybody do Friday this week?
Friday, we have a town meeting.
Could people do, this week, but it's a six P M, could anybody do like?
Yes, as long as we're.
Four thirty or five on Friday?
As long as we're at four or something.
Town meeting is what, the fourteen?
We have a special town meeting on the fourteenth.
For wastewater treatment.
Wastewater money.
Okay, yeah.
I believe that's a six.
That's a six.
So on the fourth.
So, I mean, can anybody do?
I could do that.
Yeah, Friday, Friday can work at four.
Bob?
Yeah, give me a call.
I know, but one time I don't send out a reminder email, everybody has to be paying again. So you wanna do Friday, the fourteenth, right?
Yeah, okay.
Four o'clock.
Four, does four?
That worked, that worked.
On four P M.
That worked for. That worked.
I think we just need to make sure Shane speaks everything out, right?
I can, I can be there if you need.
I mean, at least it's gonna be a nice day.
It is?
Yeah, it's supposed to be like.
At eight.
Yeah.
Wow.
My current weather.
Four o'clock, I don't want to go back to the office after, I think, just go home.
Is that a good time for you, Shane?
That works perfect.
The boss is still here.
You want us to move into three?
Seventy-six degrees. Alright, so, were you motion to adjourn?
No.
Look at.
Yeah.
The guy's coming, he's not coming.
We need to talk about it when we're done with this. Delete it when we're set.
So it's like, we're done.
So we need a motion to, to table it.
Table, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Nice to see you, Shane, nice to see you, Bob.
See you guys.
Thank you for your time, much appreciated.
So, Randy calls, he apologizes, he's down in Seattle, and he realizes he may be here. I know Randy very well, and I, I understand it, he said there is nothing out of the ordinary, he said, he gives him the field that he needs to be here, if he has to, he can come, but he's waiting on his wife to get here. If we have to table it, he understands, or if we have any questions, we could go over, if we have any questions, we can call.
I see, I'm gonna make a motion to table for my attempt.
Second.
So. All in favor?
Okay, so when am I putting him on the schedule?
Will be the oldest.
The next one, he would like to be on the next one, and he would like notification.
Well. Handholding.
Handholding.
Supposed to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Go ahead, go.
Motion.
Nope, um, so I need to know, I mean, are you needing the twenty-sixth, yes or no?
I guess we were.
Cause we have an agenda item, right?
Well, you now have, so you need, on the twenty-sixth, you need Napa?
And Randy.
And Randy, yeah.
Alright. Wait, uh, is that okay?
Anything else that comes up?
Yeah, I, um.
Were you on vacation or something like that, is that the week?
I, I'm on vacation that weekend, I'll need to get agendas and stuff together, so I'll email them, um, and I'll tell them to send them out and.
But we are meeting on the twenty, so I thought I'd turn my calendar, thank you.
Okay, so now you can.
No.
No?
So I have another thing, I've asked multiple times, select board is looking at, it has O R C lists, is there anything the board has? That would like to be addressed, so they can get it to the select board, so they can get it back to us.
When's this getting ready written, is this how it's gonna be written?
This is, when did, when did, what's his name leave?
Two weeks ago.
Darren.
Darren. So, it would, it supposedly got sent out to them two weeks before you.
So, but these are new items that, that ordinance committee be taking up?
Anything new or anything that you guys feel, anything that you guys feel needs to be fixed beyond some of the stuff, there was stuff, we went over the old list last night, and there was stuff that we were very confused on, but a lot of stuff we have addressed already.
Did you bring that list? Of what?
I, there's stuff.
That's been on there forever.
I had two notes that needed to be done, um, one was the last line of requesting an extension. Um, and then the other one was the no parking on Philbrook Street between like school dismissal hours.
Yeah, the selectmen have to handle that.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so O R C will send it to selectmen.
The.
Okay, cause it's an ordinance, you're right, okay.
The, alright, so you want parking.
On Philbrook.
This is so funny, so we're talking about, we, we have a parking, we're talking about parking, this is open agenda item to discuss parking issues in town and may state in signs or signs that need to be corrected, is that what's going on?
No, these are ordinance.
We have an ordinance that lists the num, the streets that are no parking, and when we were dealing with the reconstruction of the old Water District Building, I believe it was the Water District Building, for a pizza place, this came up, we sent it to the selectmen. And said, you should be addressing this because Ethel Busby is not a school anymore and.
Yes, of course.
And, um, so ordinance, we're just reminding the ordinance committee to deal with it.
The other one is one forty dash six, um, E?
That's been done.
Okay, and so the planning board shall review our request for renewals of expired approvals according to following standards, but all the.
That has been removed, that is on the agenda, that is, that is going to public hearing, and the area is on the ward.
Because that condition on Philbrook Street was only there because of the school, right, was that the school is no longer there.
And if you saw this sign that looked exactly like this on the side of a street, what would you take that to mean?
No parking.
So, I'm gonna stop you right there, and save you from going through all the headache, we do not have a police department, we do not, we contract with the sheriff's department.
I know the Oxford, but I'm gonna stop him and ask him, yes, yes.
Nope, I can save you even better stopping, the policy of the Oxford County Sheriff's Department is they will not.
So, this means nothing now, it means absolutely nothing.
The same with parking in front of a fire hydrant, the same with parking in and on the corner of a road, so you can't make the corner.
So normally.
There's nothing stopping.
Take that out of the ordinance.
Yeah. No, I, I raised this because on my street, there's a sign that says this.
Yep.
And it faces toward you as you're on the sidewalk, walking, and it looks exactly like this, now, I would take that to mean that there's no parking on this side of the street.
But it doesn't.
Period. But normally what happens is these signs are not like that, they're like this, and there is an arrow, meaning from this point back you can park, and from this point forward you cannot.
Right.
But this one on my street, this faces you as a pedestrian and as a driver, and there is no arrow, and yet, it's parked, it's right ahead of where it looks as if, the common person would assume, there are two parking spaces.
So, if it has an arrow.
There's no arrow.
You can, if it has an arrow, you cannot park in that section or.
And that's normation, there's arrows.
If it says that, then you're not parking on that side of the street, period.
Correct, and yet, there are apparently two parking spaces right there, that this sign is facing toward, and it makes no sense at all to me.
Okay.
That's what I'm wondering, why do you have that sign there?
So that would fall under SCOT.
Okay.
So that can add, you can ask SCOT on that, so if you, if you take Clark Street, it says no parking, but yet they actually literally park in the middle of Clark Street, so you can't even drive down the street.
Well, where, my street is Chapman Street, and that sign is right next to what used to be the Scottish shop, that house there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they parked a beautifully clean, always red pickup truck right behind that sign, and yet the sign says that, no parking this side of the street. And it's like, why is there a sign there, it, 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 anyway, it makes no sense at all.
I do have one other thing to bring you to.
Oh, that's very important.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, if it's not being enforced, that's, yeah.
Sure, where is your panel?
Okay, okay, Laurie has a, Laurie has something.
I tried to make a motion to adjourn, but.
I know, it's not happening.
We're gonna talk about parking signs, it's like, okay, I'm gonna talk about parking.
This has come up in a couple of instances, and I'm not sure we've, the way the ordinance reads right now, um, if a, if a property use is abandoned for like two years or something. Huh?
It's not on code anymore.
What?
Keep going, I know what you're gonna say, they reopen.
They re, it's all about the reopening of like-kind or non-like-kind businesses. I feel like if.
I agree.
If the business has been closed for two years, you are subject to site plan approval in your own right, within the.
I don't even, I don't even think two years is.
It's, no, there's nothing in there saying that because this came up with a certain commercial property in town that had been closed for several years, and part of it reopened, and they did not have to go back to planning board because it was opening as the same kind of.
And I don't think that's right, I think.
Well, it must go to town vote, so, I mean, you know.
Well, I mean, I think the ordinance committee should look at it and come, and.
So, so.
My thought is.
Basically is that, that's asking, or.
Site plan approval for, um, businesses reopening that have not been active in the last twenty-four months, you may all decide twenty-four months is not right, but I'm just.
Want site plan review.
Need to be subject, that would have brought.
Cause then we can make that public.
Then we can make them, do that shield their dumpster.
As people notice that you want site plan review.
Yeah, when a business has been non-operational, somebody buys it and wants to reestablish.
Non-operational for twenty-four months.
You think, I, I don't, I don't know twenty-four months is the magic moment, but that's.
I think a year.
Well, when you push twenty-four months down, put a question mark behind it, that way we'll alert you to talk about the.
Cause that's come up.
Well, the question, the way to word it would be, how long is it necessary?
If we don't have it, the ordinance, there's nothing that we can do about it.
But we should, because that's gonna happen more and more, and, um, there, there's new things we're looking at, that they wouldn't be subject to.
We're still trying.
We're still trying.
So.
I'm, I'm done.
Seventy-five, seventy-five, thirty-one. We have another half hour for a legal meeting.
Oh, really? It's six to eight?
No.
It's whatever you're done as.
It's whatever we're done.
No, see, this, uh, uh, okay. I strongly, strongly disagree, to me, in my mind, you never said a meeting start time without saying it's end time, because what happens, the problem with that is that, just as if on the start time, what does that do, it says expectations, you know you're supposed to be there. And if you don't have an end time, there's no expectation set, and people would wanna chat or talk about this or that, but if you know it's ending at this time, you gotta get it done, so I. Look, I'm, I'm trying to get things wrapped up, and Bob's not jumping at the gun, get out of here, so can you two minutes?
You know what the issue is, and you know the section.
So, right now, Philbrook says on both sides of Main Street. Right now, Philbrook says on both sides of Main Street to the Ethel Busby School from Lot.
Then he's just.
Lot from seven A M. to three P M. Do we still wanna have par, no parking?
No, 'cause they're putting it because of the school, I believe.
Yeah. So, full parking allowed on Philbrook.
I mean, the neighbors will have something to say about that, I can assure you.
Yeah, the issue of parking signs on Philbrook needs to be addressed.
Yes, I mean, don't, don't think just because the school's not there that people aren't gonna have opinions about what's appropriate.
Yeah.
Well, it took us about fifteen years to get rid of that name, it was up there, it's gone, it's gone.
I haven't been up.
So, I just, I just need to figure out what you guys think on the wording of it.